We got four of us, no one else here? The Jim should be logging in pretty soon, I would say. All right, let's try to open the meeting, let's see where we're going. Welcome everyone to the Zon Board Meeting of Artists, October 12th, 2021. My name is Marty Aiken, this is Chairman, Vice Chairman, Mr. Cabas. Board members, Charlie O'Brien, John Himmel, and we're waiting for a fifth. What we can do, guys, maybe clean up a little paperwork before someone else comes in. If we could wave the reading of the minutes of September 28th. Mr. Cabas, have a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of September 28th.
Second.
Second, and on the motion, and all in favor? I do have a letter here that want to move C Street, case number ZBA 2175 to October 26th. Have a motion, please, Mr. Cabas.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a matter number 21-75, JBC C Street LLC, where it varies to demolish a listed building, and construct a new 24-unit residential building with parking under the premises of 105 C Street Quincy, make a motion to grant the
Continue.
Continuance, that's my word, until October 26th.
Second.
All right, seconded. First of all, I'm just gonna let Mr. McCarthy speak. He's here, is he on here, where is he? Counselor, you on? I don't have him on yet, do you? Anyone?
I will see him.
Go and see him. All right, he wants to say a few words, but I'll get back to him. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, closed. Some will 4-0. All right, we're gonna have to wait on a fifth, and we'll give it a couple minutes. Either that, if no one shows up, we're gonna have to see if people want to vote 4-0, they need everybody, couldn't have one defender, so, sender. We got three cases left, we're gonna have to go back and see if you guys want to hear them. We have to have all four votes. So let's start with 418 Quincy Ave. Who's that? Who's the guy, Josh?
This is Mike Creekmore, representing Village MD.
Yeah? Here's the question I have, it's your representative. Are you an attorney?
I am not.
You're not? Can you take an oath, please, Mr. Cabas?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth?
Mike? Mike, where'd you go?
Here.
All right, he just asked you to take an oath.
Yes, so I said, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth, to help you God?
He's gone. Where'd he go? On the left. Mike!
I can hear him.
I can hear him too.
And I can see him.
No, 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 not Cabas. Mike, are you taking care of this case? Creekmore? Mike?
I think we might have lost him, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
The gentleman's name on the application is Josh Smith.
John? Where is Josh? Josh?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, are you an attorney?
I am not.
All right, Mr. Cabas, could you please give Josh, Josh, an oath?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth, to help you God?
I do, thank you.
All right, Josh, you have to have all four members, we don't have five members here tonight, so you're gonna have to have all four to win your case. You want to continue tonight?
I can't, I have a couple representatives from the MD. I don't know if we need to swear them in also, or if they can just answer any questions that come up.
Well, we can swear them all in.
We'll swear them in, yeah, we can swear them in once we hear the case.
Okay.
You're going forward, okay. Philip Baker, 2298 Fennel Street, you here?
Uh, here.
All right. Are you an attorney?
I am not, no.
Mike, could you give him an oath, please?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth, to help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, same question, we only have four members on the board tonight, you need all four votes to continue, to be granted, you're hearing?
Yeah, I think we'll still continue tonight, please.
Okay, you got it. 1719 Holm Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Edward Fleming, on behalf of the applicant, we will also move forward tonight.
Very good, okay. All right, let's go back to case number ZBA 2167. Josh Smith, a special permit to allow for the construction of a new village medical office within the existing Walgreens, and premise number 418 Quincy Ave. Is the applicant Josh, where were you? Josh, you on?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. You have the floor, tell us what you want to do.
Uh, so, this is where I'd like to turn it over to Mike Creekmore, if he's available, he was still on, supposed to be representing, but I think he's having some issues with his audio.
This is Stephen Baker, I'm with the architect's firm on the project, I can also speak to it.
All right.
Jennifer Solia with Village Medical, that's on the line as well, if you need any other questions.
All right, you want to swear them in, Mike?
Do you all swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth?
I do.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. All right, you have the floor.
All right, so our request is to build a village medical facility, which is, Jen can speak more to the actual use of space, but it's the primary physician facility, approximately 3,000 square feet, and the existing Walgreens store there in Quincy. It's an interior remodel, just taking over a portion of that sales floor of that store to provide this new medical clinic. Jennifer, would you like to explain more about the actual use of the clinic?
Yes, Stephen, I can, so the, we are Village Medical, it is a primary care facility throughout the US, we've got different markets, but we will be having primary care services provided from an MD and nurse practitioners, open seven days a week, Monday through, Monday through Friday, 7 to 7, Saturday and Sunday, 9 to 5, offering primary care, no urgent, no, you know, freestanding ER, no surgeries, none of that will be occurring.
All right, Jennifer, I know there's one down the street, you know, a third of a mile, half a mile. And when you look at all these, that warrants another one in the area?
Yes, we do feel like it does.
Okay, because, you know, I've been in the other one a couple times, and it seems like every time I go in there, I get a PA for grandkids instead of a physician. And you're gonna have physicians onsite on this facility?
Yes, sir, that's actually what makes us different, is we do have physicians and nurse practitioners both staffing in.
Good, glad to hear that. I have no questions, Mr. Cabas?
I do, so this is not an urgent care facility, this is a place where you would make regular appointments, and see a special, same doctor all the time?
Yes, sir.
Yes, of the latter?
Yes, sir, so you would have your primary care physician, I mean, obviously welcomes would be, you know, available or welcome for, you know, urgent needs of sniffles or any of that, but yes, we are looking for continuous of care with our patients.
Thank you.
Sir.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no questions at this time.
Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
Okay, I just, I know you take care of, like, not surgery, but someone breaks their finger, do you walk in and fix that?
So I think a finger is kind of a hard one to say, I mean, could we splint it, yes, and refer them on to an orthopedic, yes, are we performing any x-rays or surgeries within the space, no, sir. Now, thinking about like your diabetes, hypertension, cholesterol, those type of things, wellness care, well child, immunization, blood work, analysis, that sort of thing is what we'd be focusing on.
All right, someone cuts their hand, need stitches, you do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. I have no more questions. Anything else you want to say for the board, let's the public speak?
Out at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that wants to be in favor of this project? Anyone to speak in favor?
Mr. Rutherford.
Mr. Rutherford, you're up. Take an oath, Mr. Rutherford, there you go.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm John Rutherford, 62 Remall Road in Quincy. I'm like, are you gonna accept mass health at this facility? The question I got from people.
I'm not for sure on the actual insurance plans, can you tell me a little bit more about that one specifically, sir?
Well, you know, people who are on mass health, there's a dire need for people, you know, who are accepting new patients, so, I mean, we definitely do need new providers coming to the city that, one, accept mass health, and two, are actually actively, you know, seeking new patients. I mean, I personally, myself, I'm looking for a primary care doctor that accepts mass health, and it's really hard to find, so, you know, that would be a huge benefit, I was just wondering if you accepted mass health.
Yeah, unfortunately, I am on the construction side of things, so I don't know the individual insurance policy, you know, plan per market, but I do know that we are, every location's accepting new patients, so, sorry, I'm not specific to the actual, the insurance policies of that market.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, I mean, with the closing of the hospital, we definitely need healthcare desperately in the city, so I welcome any new healthcare providers, and I urge you to accept mass health, or at least look into it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak in favor? Second call. Third call.
No further hands.
Closed, I have a letter here from BPW, September 22nd, 2021, 418 Quincy Ave, case number ZBA 2167. We have reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call?
No hand.
Jonathan, did you tell them how to do that, just in case?
Yeah, so, if you're looking to speak, sorry, if you're looking to speak, you can go to reactions button on your toolbar, and hit, use the virtual hand raise or any reaction, if you're calling in on a phone, you're gonna want to hit star nine, worst case, turn the screen on and just give us a wave.
Second call? Third call, call the father hearing, closed. I'll be voting in favor, I think it's well needed, we need as many of those as the hospital can.
I'll be voting in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Can I have a motion, please, Mr. Cabas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a matter number 21-67, Josh Smith, for a special permit to allow construction of a new village medical office within the existing Walgreens, on the premises of 418 Quincy Ave, make a motion to grant the special permit.
Second.
Uh, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Yes, Mike Cabas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Martin Aiken?
Yes. Thank you very much. Further on tonight's agenda, Philip Baker, for a finding to it, that adding a one-story open covered porch is not substantially more detrimental on the premises number 298 Fennel Street. Is the applicant representative here?
Yes, we are.
Philip, you have the floor, tell us where you want to go.
Good evening, Chairman Aiken, members of the board, my name is Philip Baker at Rockwood Design, our address is 1020 Plain Street in Marshville, Massachusetts, so we're looking to extend the existing non-conforming front setback, it is an existing non-conforming structure in regards to front setback, lot width and area, the existing front setback to the current dwelling is about 20.5, give or take, 20.4 feet, and we're looking to build a six-foot front covered porch, they have a view out to the marsh on that side of Fennel Street, they want to sit out there and kind of relax, so we're looking for a six-foot front extension of a covered porch, it's not gonna be heated, just uncovered, or it's covered, but not walled in, so it's looking for a finding to say that it's not more detrimental than what's already counted there.
Uh, any question? I have no questions, Mr. Cabas?
I have no questions.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
All right, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of this project, putting a six-foot torch up front of their home in Fennel Street?
No hands, Mr. Chairman.
First call, second call, third call closed. I have a letter here from the BPW, September 22nd, 2198 Fennel Street, case number ZBA 2173, we reviewed above the project, have no comments. Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call? Second call?
No hands.
All closed. I'll be voting in favor.
I'll be voting in favor, Mr. Chairman.
In favor.
In favor.
Have a motion, please, Mr. Cabas.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a matter number 21-73, Philip Baker, for a finding that adding a one-story open covered porch is not substantially more detrimental on the premises of 298 Fennel Street, make a motion to grant the finding.
Second.
Second, can I have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mike Cabas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
John Himmel?
Yes.
And Martin Aiken?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Further on tonight's agenda, ZBA 2174, 1719 Holm Street, a special permit variance to demolish existing two-family home, and construct a new six-unit residential building with parking underneath, number 17 Holm Street, Quincy, is the applicant, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Edward Fleming, I'm here on behalf of 17 and 19 Holm Street LLC, and it's Mr. Shlomo Solomon, its principal. As you indicated, the property is located at 17 and 19 Holm Street, it's located within a business B zoning district, I'm joined tonight by Mr. Solomon, and also by Chi Man from Hardy Man Engineering, who prepared the site plan and all the engineering plans related to the matter, and also David Freed from Chu and Company, who prepared the architectural plans. The property of 17 and 19 Holmes is about a 7,500 square foot parcel, and as I indicated, it's located in a business B zoning district, and despite the business B zoning of the area, of the street, it's primarily residential, although it's mixed in character, there are a number of different buildings, residential buildings in the area, including other large multifamily buildings, including a 12-unit building directly across the street, a 10-unit building about two doors down, and then a number of different sized dwellings in the area. The site, as you know, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, is in very close proximity to North Quincy MBTA Station, and the new, all the new development in North Quincy, as well as the North Quincy Business District. This proposal is actually comparably quite small compared to those projects and the projects even on the street. What we're seeking to do is to essentially remove the existing two-family house, which is quite tired in nature, and construct a new six-unit residential condominium. The building will be four stories in total height from Holm Street, it will provide garage parking under the building, the 12 parking spaces, so two spaces per unit, and the proposal will actually meet with the character of the neighborhood, and provide some much-needed housing for a lot of the apartment dwellers that are gonna be looking for more permanent housing in the neighborhood. The matter has gone before the planning board, underwent a very thorough review by the planning board and department, and also all of the departments of the city, as well as peer review, and there were a number of changes made to the plans, I think most significantly, when we started talking about this proposal, we were talking about 15 units. When we approached the planning board, we actually proposed 10 units, and after significant revisions to the plans, really to address issues related to parking, the applicant has revised its proposal and is proposing six residential units, which really fits well on the site, and it fits well within the neighborhood. We spoke with Counselor Harris, who did not express any concerns about the proposal, although we didn't have a neighborhood meeting, at the planning board's meetings, which were two or three in nature, there were no neighbors that appeared at those meetings other than Mr. Rutherford, who expressed any comments or concerns about the proposal. Yeah. I'm always happy to hear from John. The request, the relief that we're requesting here is a special permit to continue the residential, multifamily residential use in a business B zoning district, as well as dimensional variances from the ordinance, and as you know, it converts from business B to residence C, which provides much more land area per unit than what is provided in other districts. We believe, however, this is a great reuse of the property, and it provides some really classy, nice condominium units in close proximity to the North Quincy apartment dwellings that are being built in that area, so, I'd like to have, I know that Chi's here, but a lot of Chi's work was reviewed by the city's departments and the BPW, as well as peer review, so it may not be necessary for Chi to make a presentation tonight, but I'd like to have David just kind of walk through the plans, so if we could allow David to share his screen, so that we can just kind of walk through those plans very briefly.
All right, and if you could do that, please?
It's all set. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for the opportunity to present this project, my name is David Freed, I am an architect at Chu Company, and describe this proposal as a new six-unit condominium building. Our site is just a few steps away from West Quantum Street, and abuts the MBTA tracks on one side, homes on the other. The image on the left is the existing view of the house, here's a view on the right of looking down Holm Street, you can see that the houses are all in alignment here, and our building is also in the same alignment. Here's a view in the lower left looking back up towards the building at the North Quincy Station, and then the picture in the lower right is a view from the tracks to the back of the house. This is the site plan of our building, our parking is located underneath, and will be out of view, we use a natural slope to descend almost one story to the parking garage, where we have 12 parking spaces, our building is sited to align with the other buildings on Holm Street, we're set back 13.8 feet, so we can provide a nice landscaped front yard with eight of crinols and shrubs. The building is located 10 feet from the side lot line, 10 from the rear, and 21 from the left side lot line. This is the plan of our garage level, where you can see we have pro parking spaces, we have an area that the engineer has determined we need for drainage, we have a trash room that's contained within the building, we have a bike storage room also within the building. This building is an elevator building, it was a nice addition to this property. But the building is basically divided with two, one unit on each side, and they range inside in size from 1,150 square feet to 1,380 on floors two and three, when we get up to the third and fourth floors, the units are a little bit larger. They're both two-bedroom, two-bath. On the third floor, these units get a little bit larger, they're around 1,600 square feet in size, because they both have sort of a loft-like media room on the upper floor, fourth The image on the right is the front of the building, the center entrance is flanked on either side by two-story bays, on top of the bays, there are little balconies for the units on the third floor, the fourth floor addition is set way back, so that it would ideally be out of view from people walking down the side. The materials are fiberglass lap siding, wood around the entrance, and fiberglass panel The image on the left is, would be the view as seen from the tracks. This is the side elevation, and again, you can see we have lap siding in some different colors, we have some panels on the roof here, we have case of windows, and we have some balconies in the back that would be out of view from the street, but would provide some outdoor space for each of the units. This is the other side elevation, they're identical, and that is really, that sums up our presentation.
On the side of the building, you say there's lap siding, what is it made of?
Oh, it's fiberglass.
Oh, cement, all right, so, those are my questions, I just wanted to see the building.
That's the applicant's presentation, Mr. Chairman, as I said, Chi Man is here, if there's any questions about drainage, but again, it's been reviewed in detail by both the city and by the peer review, and some changes were made to address those concerns.
Yeah, I see that, and all in notes, Mr. Cabas, any questions?
Yeah, at this time.
All right, Mr. O'Brien?
I have two, could you go over the roof, what's up there again, those?
Solo panels.
See this specifically about the materials on the roof here?
No, I'm just, what are the rooms, what's the rooms up there?
Oh.
Were there rooms?
One room each, mezzanine, you can use it for anything you want, bedroom, mezzanine, whatever.
It's open actually to the floor below, so it's enclosed, you come up the stairs and you can look, you can look down into the living room below, so it's basically just, it would be a family room or a media room, and then there are small decks in the back that face the MBTA tracks.
Okay, and the other question I have is snow storage.
Okay. The driveway has been designed to be heated, so that we wouldn't have much snow here. Yeah, the snow would just be, would mostly, this would all be heated, so we wouldn't have an issue with snow in the hole.
How about the other area there behind the structure?
This is all.
Parking area.
This is all over here. Most of the driveway, most of the parking area is covered, sir, by the building above.
Okay, how about the stuff that abuts the MBTA tracks?
Over in here?
Yeah.
We would have to just push that off to the side here.
Okay, that's all.
I'm gonna shut the mic off.
I think we addressed, I think we addressed snow removal with the planning board, that we would remove any snow from that area if necessary, but with the heated driveway and heated in the heat in the, and the majority of the space is covered, we didn't anticipate that there would be much snow to be really addressing, and we just kind of essentially tuck it off the side of the, of the, of the property.
Okay, I hope it works, thank you.
John? Himmel?
We're looking at the grain space, you're going from 4,000 to 135, is that right? That's the best you can do?
Yes, it is, yeah, much of the areas devoted to the parking.
And I think what was, what was attempted is to create some exterior area for the tenants through the use of the porches and the use of the roof, so that they'll have some outside area to utilize, then we'll certainly use the front area of the property as well. But yeah, there's certainly limited space, as it, and much of it is because the site slopes so dramatically down to the T. to the T, that some of that area in the back is really just not usable.
Okay.
Is that it? It's funny?
Yes, that's our presentation.
Thanks, if you could clear the screen, that'd be great. Uh, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Condominiums. Anyone want to speak in favor? Call?
Citizen Roderf, Mr. Chairman.
Citizen Roderf. John, you're up.
Are you doing again? Yeah, I'm in favor of this one, that's all I gotta say, thank you.
Thanks, John. Is there anyone else want to speak in favor, second call? Third call closed, I have a letter here from BPW, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, seventeen Home Street, case number ZBA twenty-one seventy-four, reviewed, we have reviewed and provided comments to the project, this project to the planning board. All comments were provided, have been addressed properly, we do not have any further comments of the zoning board of appeals at this time, for the further information required, please advise. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call? Second call?
No hands.
Third call? Call the party hearing closed. You know, it's, uh, it's tight, but I like the parking underneath where it is, I think you're gonna have a couple empty spots there with, with the T being right beside it, so, uh, I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be voting in favor too, it's, uh, busy street, but, uh, it's a cut through street, but it's right next to the T.
Mr. O'Brien?
It's gonna be interesting to watch, because we just approved one across the street last week, you know, so, uh, two weeks ago, so, um, and I'm sure there's gonna be a squeeze when these are all done, but I'll be in favor.
Mr. Hemel?
Well, there's a number of things I don't like, but I'm gonna look past it, because they have done a lot of work in modifying this, uh, property from a lot more units originally proposed, um, and it is condos, I feel better about condos than apartments, so I'll be voting in favor.
I do too, thank you. Have a motion, please, Mr. Cabeas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, matter number twenty-one dash seventy-four, seventeen nineteen Home Street LLC for a special permit variance, to demolish the existing two-family home and construct a new six-unit residential building with parking under the premises number seventeen Home Street, and make a motion to grant a special permit and the variance.
Second.
On, on that, uh, Madam Clerk, can I have a voice call?
Mike Cabeas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
And Martin Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a motion, please, Mike, and, uh, is there anything on your agenda that you want to talk about, uh, meetings, uh? All set?
I'm all set.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Hold on one, one sec, Mr. McCarthy, are you here? Now, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Who's the most, guys, thanks a man, it's the fastest ever.